Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, November 14th, 2005. This evening, City Council is going to be meeting in a series of committee meetings, first with Committee of the Whole, then Arts and Recreation, Finance and Personnel, and finally Planning and Development. First, the Committee of the Whole will be chaired by Dale Tampey. Dale?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. This is a Committee of the Whole. The one agenda item we have on the Committee of the Whole's meeting is to discuss further the proposal that we had heard from the Strouds Run Task Force. It was an excellent proposal, but we had many things going on that evening, and so here it is, the first thing on the agenda, with an opportunity for council members and members of that group to have a more casual conversation about issues that may have occurred to council since the time we heard the proposal. Kevin, I, you and I exchanged a little bit of email. You asked me what were some of the budget concerns, and I think I asked you a couple of questions about the budget, so perhaps we could start with that. To the rest of council members, one of the issues that I wanted to air out with regard to the budget is that we have heard in the proposal some estimates for what current operational costs are, and then what our future obligations might be. And one of the questions I had was, what are our short-term and long-term abilities to meet those obligations? We heard talk of grants, we heard talk of endowments, we heard talk of support from various entities, and so I thought it'd be a good idea for us to talk a little more about that, at least to get the ball rolling tonight. So with that tortured preamble, the ball, it's up to y'all.
Well, I think we first start with the short-term goals, and the short-term goals really are more of ones that would maintain, to the extent possible, what's currently happening at Strouds Run. And in that, there would also be some degree of partnerships, of the sharing of costs. ODNR has shared their budget information with us, both revenue and expense-wise. Revenue-wise, does not cover expenses by a long ways, and we really don't have any anticipation that revenue for charges out there is really going to cover all of the expenses even in the long term. If we go with that roughly $137,000, which is pretty much a net cost after the collection of some fees for, one thing ODNR would give us is the use of the current house that's out there that's used by the Division of Watercraft. That rental income would then come to the city, assuming that we would continue that relationship. And then there are also, there's the boat dock fees, there's a certain degree of concession income in the summertime, some camping fees. So there's a number of fees that were stated by the Advisory Committee. And as I said, we get down to this $137,000 or so. Initially, the discussions with Ohio Department of Natural Resources are that they will turn over all existing equipment that is there, which has some value with it. None of it is brand-new equipment. And in addition to that, they're willing to make a one-time contribution of $49,500, approximately is what we're negotiating at right now, toward the first year of operation as we see for real what our operations costs are. We're also having some discussions with different colleges at Ohio University that have academic and, to some degree, recreational usages at Strouds Run that are in a formal manner in the respect that different classes use that as their laboratory. Some research is being conducted out there now, has been for, ever since really the park opened. So that request is out, and I know, I think Doug Franklin was spearheading some of that, but I think we have some degree of realization that they're already almost halfway through their budget year this year, so you may be talking July 1, next budget year, before some of those would really come about. So in the short term, that, we would start out at a smaller figure, because obviously ODNR has continued to do some. That figure would grow, or, you know, the alternative to it is that you don't do all the services that are currently being done there, if the city cannot totally afford it themselves. One of the major things that's really hard to build into the budget is the local partnerships that can be developed with various entities, and I, you know, maybe someone from the committee could talk a little bit better about that, like the local Horsemen's Association, or scouting, or other areas that have utilization there now, that want to continue that utilization. We're, as being a local entity, and being able to talk to people locally, you're in a best, better opera, position in the state of Ohio is to get local sponsoring in projects. One example of that could well be trying to form a partnership with local school systems, with those that teach carpentry, either at the high school level, vocational school, or Hockin College, to help in the replacement of picnic tables and work on shelter houses. That's something probably the state wouldn't do, but we would have the ability to do. And one of the things that I received since the last presentation was an email from the Director of the GIS Department at Hockin College, saying, "Oh, this would be a great lab for my GIS students. Just tell us how we might be able to help in conducting classes, and we can GPS anything you want done out there." So I think that's just, you know, to touch on those. On the long term, yes, we feel that the endowment, the Friends of Strouds Run, would be the best way of looking at things, because there are a lot of people out there that have graduated from the university, some that still live around the area, that if they could see some, you know, like if we could partner with the Athens Foundation, for example, to be the repository of those funds, could we build up monies over the years to be, through endowments, other grants, to be able to help defray those costs within the future. I think a large thing that the committee is really asking for, or at least I'm really firmly supporting, is that we're at the stage where we've studied this to death. We have reams and boxes of information, I think most of it's in Doug's office, unless he's gotten able to get rid of it yet. And we have a lot of good concepts and ideas, and really, I think what's being asked is, can we get a commitment from the city to put in together a three-year plan to see how we can go and fulfill all of the things that the committee has asked for? And in doing that, this committee has volunteered to continue their function during that time period, and to help accomplish those goals. I think that, you know, one person asked me, "What's the worst thing that can happen?" And I guess with city ownership of that, and really, probably the worst thing is we'll do less than what the state did in maintaining it, because we don't have the resources to. I mean, that may be the worst-case scenario that's there. What I'm really asking, you saw in the recommendations to me, in the last page of the documents submitted to you, a whole series of actions that we, that the committee felt needed to be done, and I sort of added another one to that, in saying that what I would first like is just the authorization or resolution of intent, if you will, that we proceed and go to final negotiations with ODNR, and try to pursue some of these other partnerships more diligently, because we have a timetable then that would be developed, and then bring those final documents back to City Council, and have Council approve those probably sometime next year, hopefully early in the year. And that's sort of where I am on it, but I would ask a couple of our volunteers if they wish to make any other comment, or additional comment.
I recently spoke to Alan Geiger, Assistant to the President, and didn't get a formal commitment for funding, but I got a commitment for, that they wanted to be, actually, they wanted to be involved. One of the concerns that Dr. Geiger indicated was that the city was looking for a three-year commitment, and as I looked at the budgets, I felt strongly that we need to have a five-year commitment. The university needs to be involved in this for at least five years. I think after talking to Dean Niemann, and I believe he talked to another dean, in my position as Assistant Dean for Recreation and Wellness, I can commit dollars, albeit not as much as I'd like, but I can commit some dollars. And a five-year commitment, I think, over time would allow the endowment to grow, it would allow the concessions to grow, it would allow you to review outsourcing, to see if you could generate more revenue that way, or at least defer some of the expenses. And as I always tell my students in class, it's a balance of revenue generation versus cost containment. And I think by looking at something for five years, I would never, ever tell anybody to start a business unless they had a five-year plan. Three-year plan seems to me to be a bit narrow. Five-year commitment seems to allow you the time to develop a good, sound business plan, and have a much better opportunity to generate the revenue that you need to offset this. There has to be a commitment from the city, and I, you know, we discussed this on the committee a number of times, that this is a recreational pursuit. It's a recreational pursuit for the people of the, of the city of Athens in southeast Ohio, and I think there's a greater good here, so I think that there needs to be a commitment from the city. That doesn't necessarily mean that it needs to be a giant commitment, but there needs to be some commitment from, on the part of the city for these kind of activities. I think it's just as important to have a community center, or just important to have parks, and this is a great asset to this particular area.
Other questions? Anyone else?
Well, I think we've made our presentation a couple of weeks ago. I don't think any of us have changed our minds. I think that it still is a great opportunity to have local control and a local vision about 2,700 acres that is right next door to us. It's a logical outgrowth of our desire for a green belt, as expressed in the comprehensive plan. You know, it, and it's a great opportunity for the future. I think that our vision of the park is very important, that it is largely a conservancy. We do not, we don't have great dreams of putting in jet ski slaloms, or golf courses, or resorts, or condos, or, I mean, the, our vision is, and I don't think I have to read it again, but is for something that is, you know, is very much a conservancy, is maintaining the quality of the environment and improving on it, and having that as something for our community to be proud of, and for our future, you know, to look forward to. And, you know, certainly, any questions?
Questions, folks? This is your pay time to ask. Go ahead, Paul. Okay. One of the questions I had asked is, worst-case scenario, if we don't pick up on it, run with it, what would happen? It would just keep deteriorating, I assume?
I don't necessarily, there's a difference between deterioration and a, and a plan for less activity. Right now, the park, I don't necessarily know if I'd call it deterioration, but certainly it, there's places that aren't cut as much as before. But I think if you have a planful way to return the land, certain portions of the land, that will reduce our costs, you can do that in a thoughtful manner. It's not necessarily a deterioration. Let's say you say, "Okay, I don't want to cut that grass. I'm going to let it grow back to a more natural state." That's not a bad thing. There's certain aspects of having a natural state that's actually better for the park in the first place. I'm not, by any stretch of the imagination, a wildlife manager, but people have told me that if you let the grass grow up, then the geese will go away, because they're afraid of the grass that flows. Not a bad thing, but let's do it in a thoughtful way, rather than turning a blind eye and letting it deteriorate on its own. It's just a more thoughtful approach, and I think that's always something that you have to look at as you look down at the plan, that's your exit strategy. The exit strategy is a more formal return to its natural state to reduce your costs, if your revenue just doesn't generate. But I, nobody on the committee doesn't believe that this is not going to generate some significantly more revenue.
If we're doing a five-year plan, is it possible to get more than one-year commitment out of the state for that money? I mean, it's a one-shot deal, and they're, I don't know the negotiations and how, what the status of that was, but it seems to, you know, they're, okay, I guess I have a couple of different questions. One is, what happens if we fall down in five years? Do we return it to them? If we can, if we're doing it for five years, and they're leaving by the back door, can we get a little bit more money than just one year's, you know, payment out of it? And I don't know who did the negotiation, how, and what the, you know, if we give you authorization, is this something that falls into the negotiation points, I guess?
Well, there are some things that in the negotiations with the state, as you heard through the presentation, that we're trying to leave as a state responsibility, such as the dam itself. Because we don't really feel that's a financial commitment that the city should make for almost any time in the future. There's also other services that we're asking ODNR to continue to provide, such as stocking of the lake with fish, consultations that they can have with our people, they have offered to help train and work with whoever we hire there, and with Kevin, to go over things with respect to the management that they have done to it, what is in existence there. So there are, the cash dollars, yes, right now, they're saying, because of the nature of the state budget, that they get a two-year budget. And next July 1 is the second year of the two-year budget.
Oh, so that's all they can do?
And so they're making that commitment through what their budget year is. Can we turn, you know, keep asking? Certainly, we can always ask. But the other types of commitments of people and the, you know, help are ones that would be ongoing, and we wish to continue those to be ongoing. Wildlife management, watercraft, there are certain things in there that we want to continue that relationship and partnership with the state for it. So, you know, I don't know that they can commit over different budget years or not. In essence, we also know that you, as a legislative body, can make a commitment, and the next legislative body can say, "Forget about that." I mean, because that's the reality, and so what we're trying to do is say, as real as we know it today, we, these are firm things, and these are plans that we have. And I think when Chris was talking, last, Christine Fall, when she was talking, that one of the first things that we really need to definitively do is put together a management plan. And Doug's saying it almost in the same way, a five-year plan that's there. I mean, those are the, you know, things that need to be done. There's, you know, this is not without risk of costing the city taxpayers money, and coming back to a situation where we want to give it back to the state or something. But then again, there's the opportunity of it as to what can our community have in our residents that we, in essence, would protect it. One of the other emails I got this past, past week was, "Well, how would Strouds Run be affected if the state legislature passes this thing about drilling for natural gas in state parks? If the city would take this over, would that still be subject to that kind of a thing?" I honestly can't, can't say until we know what the negotiated agreement is with ODNR as to the transfer of the park to the city of Athens. So there are a lot of, there's lots of questions tonight. I don't, I can give you what I would try to accomplish, but I can't say that that's going to be in the final deal.
Okay. Please. I thought what Paul was asking, first of all, was a question that crossed my mind. If we don't say yes to this, what are the, what's the state planning to do with the park?
I, I've asked the state that, and basically, they'll say they're continuing. You can look at what's happened over the last few years. I mean, the plain fact of that matter is that the director of Strouds, or the camp director, the park director retired, they didn't fill the position. They don't really know how much money they're, that's costing to operate the park, because they're operating it from a distance, they're operating it from Burrow. So one can only take the next logical step, is that they're going to continue a hands-off approach. If you look at where they're putting their money, they're putting their money in the parks that have lodges. That's what they told me they're going to do, that's what they're going to continue to do, that's what everybody that we interviewed said that they would do. So what's going to happen to the park? The park is going to continue and not be a planful degradation, if you will, or a closing of certain areas, or letting it go back to a natural state for a natural reason. It's going to degrade because of a lack of attention, because there's less and less money.
We don't, we really don't know what the state will do. That, and that's, that's one of the big, the big problems. That's one of the big questions, is probably one of the motivating factors behind our interest in this. The state does not have a plan to even generate a management plan for the park. There never has been, as far as we know or could discover, there never has been a management plan. And so I think that, you know, more than ever, it's subject to the, you know, vagaries of the state, you know, economy and politics, and, you know, and it seemed to us very important that those decisions be closer to home, rather than in Columbus, or, you know, or anywhere else.
Thank you. Other questions?
Is it possible for someone in the audience to come in?
Sure, just a moment. Yeah. Bill, we'll get you up to a microphone here in a minute, make sure, no? Okay.
Actually, I do have a further question, if nobody else is going to ask. The mayor talked about services that we're going to talk to the state about continuing. And two weeks ago, there was mention about the possibility that the lake might sometime, in a not-too-distant future, need to be dredged, and there was some kind of list that we're on. Is that going to be a cost that's going to come along sometime, or is that done by the state?
There is no dredging list, and the question, that's part of the things that we have to discuss in the management plan, is the appropriateness-
Of whether we need one.
-of whether we dredge or not.
Right.
On the state, it's not even on their list. It used to be dropped down to do some things, but they've not done that anymore. And so the question is going to be for the management plan is, when do we dredge? Do we dredge? And if so, when, and for what purpose? So we can't answer that without getting somebody to come in and look at that operation. So it's not, it's one of those, it's an unknown. I'm not necessarily sure that it's a, what we would call a deal breaker, because I think that they would help along with the dredging, if that's what we needed.
Paul? Another question, you just brought up the, Jim just brought up the dredging part. And I know there was discussion of getting the equipment and the house, and I know these are minor things, but other infrastructure in terms of water, I know we don't really have a septic system there, per se, I mean, so what's, and I, I've told you I have a big stack of paper of information of this sort. So how, what's the condition of mostly infrastructure? Are there any things we should be looking at that will come up all of a sudden, or?
I think we reviewed the majority of the infrastructure. ODNR said that the electrical's not a problem, there's no sewer, so you don't have to worry about that.
Yeah.
I recall having a conversation about one water pipe that was probably in disrepair that we need to repair it, but Wayne said that the city had the capability, it wouldn't be that significant. The plain fact of the matter is, there's not a heck of a lot of infrastructure there. There is some infrastructure at the house, the equipment is there, and is probably in a, it's probably in a decent set, but we have no idea how long the capital plan that we'd have to put into place to, to maintain that equipment. So we don't know what that, what the quality of that equipment is, but it's obviously good enough for them to have it to maintain that park. And I would surmise that they didn't plan on replacing a lot of that equipment soon.
Okay.
We do have an inventory of that equipment, though.
I just wondered, I mean, when we start talking about dredging, and I know we were talking about doing the parking lot in-house as well-
Right.
... and that's, there's roads or county and township, I guess, so that's not a problem.
Yeah, I don't think I'd worry about the dredging too much. We spent a lot of time talking about that, and then it was, half the group said, "We don't ever want to dredge it," and the other half of the group says, "Oh, yeah, you want to dredge it?" And, you know, really, the thing to do is find out, based on a set of parameters, do you really want to dredge it? And then, where do you go to get it dredged? But it's not on their list to dredge.
Okay. I have a question for Kevin, though. Right now, you've acquired, you know, various lands in the parks stuff, and most of that's being maintained, or rather, acclimated or whatever, by volunteer work? Is that the case, or?
Yeah, what we've done is, we've done a lot of trail work between Sells and Strouds on the property the city's purchased the last two or three years. We do have a part-time trail supervisor-
Mm-hmm.
-who does the work on our trails, which connects us to Strouds Run State Park. That position currently pays around $15,000 a year, 20 hours a week, around 50 weeks a year. So we have somebody in place already doing some of that work, with some of the lands we already have purchased.
But they do have volunteers helping?
A lot of volunteers, the university, also a lot of the civic groups, and clubs, and Eagle Scouts. We've got a couple Eagle Scout projects at Hawk Woods. So there are a lot of volunteer hours on top of those 1,000 hours that we're employing somebody.
In terms of your other recreation activities, you seem about the same ratio of volunteers versus paid, or, I guess the reason, we're just, if we acquire this whole lump, and I know you have volunteers doing the West State Street stuff, I'm aware of that. I don't know everything about the community center and all the other activities, but, you know, what I'm hearing, it sounds like the wilderness side, you're getting lots of volunteers, the baseball side, you're getting lots, the softball side, you're getting lots of volunteers. What ratio is that? That's 40%, 50%?
Ratio of cost, or ratio of numbers of people?
Number of people's work hours versus paid work hours?
I don't really have that figure. Where we have most of all volunteers is the special facilities, like the skate park, trail work, ball fields, soccer fields, things that are special interest. We get a lot of volunteer hours. I don't have that exact number, though, how many man-hours that is.
Percentage-wise, you know, a fan, or?
All. I would say on trail work, we probably have around 80% of the work being done on trails is volunteers, so we only have one person who works on those trails full, you know.
How about the softball stuff?
Softball and baseball fields, of the renovations that we've done currently, about 90% of that's been done by either volunteers or in-kind contractors that have been secured by the baseball group, the sandlot group.
Okay.
Skate park, very similar. Most of the work that we've done there has been done by volunteers. Some of the improvements we've made, we may have bought the materials, but all the labor's been done by volunteer labor.
Okay, thank you.
To add to that, all of the, from what I understand, I believe all of the trail work down at Strouds Run is done by volunteer efforts. The Horsemen's Council has the north part of the trail, and then I think John News and the Conservancy has the south part of the trail, the south part of the park. So all of the trails right now are being maintained by the volunteers, many of which, or at least the key person, was on the task force.
Let's, I'm going to invite Phil Cantino to come up to my, I believe was a member of the, of the group.
Thank you. My name is Phil Cantino, I live at 33 Cable Lane. I didn't actually come up here to talk about trails, but I just, as one of the volunteers, I just want to say, you've got to all go out and see this trail system, it's getting better all the time. You've got to see the bridge across Cucumber Tree Run. It's pretty amazing what John Nouse and the volunteers have done out there. But what I really wanted to talk about, and this relates to something the mayor Abel brought up, is State Bill 193, because it's very relevant, and I'm not sure that all of you are fully aware of this. This is a Senate bill that would open all state-owned public lands, not only to oil and gas drilling, but also logging. And this includes state parks, and even state nature preserves, unbelievably. And this includes state parks and even state nature preserves, unbelievably. As far, it might even include land owned by state universities, I'm not sure if Dycehart Woods or the Ridges will fall under this. And, and then a similar bill is going to be introduced in the House this winter. SB 193 would create a new agency called the Oil, Gas, and Timber Leasing Board that would approve leases for private companies to log on state-owned land, or to drill for gas and oil on state-owned land. And this board would have five members, the chief of the Division of Mines, the chief of the Division of Forestry, a representative of the gas and oil industry, a representative of the timber industry, and one environmental representative. So, one person out of five on this board would have an environmental perspective, and I think you can predict, as well as I can, what sort of decision they would make when faced with a choice between keeping big trees because they're beautiful, keeping them because they can make some money from them. So, and then the other thing, companies would nominate any land owned by the state for logging or drilling, and public comment would not be invited. So, if this bill par, if this bill passes, I think it's fair to say that no state park or nature preserve would really, could be considered safe from the environmental degradation that comes with, with logging in particular, and road building. Now, Stroud's Run in particular, you're probably all aware, there are gas wells on the private lands surrounding Stroud's Run, so presumably, there is gas below Stroud's Run. And, you know, as someone who walks off trail a lot, I can tell you there are a lot of stands of very nice old trees in the park that are very beautiful and that probably are worth some money. So, I think it's fair to say that if this bill passes, and if the state continues to own Stroud's Run, that there will be logging and that there will be gas and oil drilling out there. And the only way that we can be sure that doesn't happen is for the city to take over the deed to the park, not just to manage it, but to own the park. And, you know, I would say further that if this happens, there should be restrictions on that deed that would prevent any future city administration that might be less environmentally conscious than this one, from doing the same sorts of things that we're afraid the state will do. I think that's pretty important. So, you know, Stroud's, been pointed out, Stroud's Run was originally set aside for recreational and educational use, and that's what it should be preserved for. So, I fully support the task force's recommendation, and I urge the city council to, to, to support it as well. You know, the sooner that Stroud's Run is deeded to the city, the safer it will be. It's a gorgeous place, if you haven't all spent a lot of time out there, you really should. We're very fortunate to have it, and we should do everything we can to protect it for our own enjoyment and, and for future generations. Thank you.
Council members, other questions? Okay, anybody else out there? Don't I have any takers? I want to, I'd like to just add a couple of things, since I guess I, I'm the one that raised, maybe raised the issue originally. And this would help me, just as one council member, be better prepared to proceed with, with something, you know, with the recommendation. One is, I read in the proposal of definitive income, and I see city putback of $50,000, ODNR 49.5, and existing park income of $18,000. So, that, that's under the realm of definitive income. And so, if it's definitive, I'd like to know its source and how long we'll have it. If it's only a year, as it's noted, one of these is noted for only a year, then it would be, and that's good, and the city putback, I'm not, maybe, and I probably just didn't pay good enough attention during the proposal, but it'd be good to know what that is, the source of that. Then, when I see anticipated income, I, I'm flipping two pages in, I'm seeing additional city putback of $27,000, Ohio University $50,000, fees, et cetera, $30,000, and foundations and grants $50,000. Again, it would be good for me to know the definitiveness of those particular sources, are they sources that we're planning to ask, or we have some sort of preliminary commitment, and we believe it's going to happen, or it's money in the bank? Those, and it would, and I apologize for asking what maybe seemed to be very basic questions, but we have not had the benefit of all the conversations that have gone on for the many months that the group put in. And for many, for me in particular, I'm sort of low on the learning curve, but I'm, but I'm getting a little higher. And so, meetings like this and conversations like this will help us be able to move this thing forward. It was, and all, and please accept the questions in the spirit they're offered, it's just wanting to know. It's not a comment on the quality or the quantity of the work that was done to prepare the presentation. So, not that we're going to spend time tonight on this, I, I'm sensing nobody else has really any questions at the moment, but as we proceed with this, we may have another discussion about this matter. It'd be good to get some answers to those particular questions, and there may be others that come up. Yeah?
Well, and what we're talking about now is a resolution of intent-
Yeah.
-where we can spell out that these are certain questions that need to be answered before we'll be able to make a final decision, but in general, so, I, I think that we could consider going ahead with something like that, if we spell out what those remaining questions and concerns are.
Yeah, and the only point of my original question was, to proceed with something like that, I'd just like to know where we are. That's all. I mean, I'm not trying to suggest we need to have everything tied up with a bow, but I'd just like to know, have a little more definitive information about some of the financial things in here, recognizing that things can change based on a service level that we want, that we would want to maintain in the, in the, in the area. But that does have an impact on some of the things that are in the pro, in the other part of the pro forma, where we have a couple of positions and those types of things. I understand that stuff can change.
I think, Dale, that the city putback is the use of city funds, period, cash.
Right, yeah, okay.
And we're anticipating in that first year that that'd be $50,000. The way that that, that would be, come about, to a certain extent, there is some dollars that are unappropriated currently in the recreation fund, but not $50,000.
Yeah.
But as you recall, last year, we changed the income tax mix, things are a little bit better income tax collection-wise, it's up 4.6 or 7% so far this year. So, we could potentially restore that 1% we cut, that would put in, what, about $70,000, as I recall, back into the recreation fund, and that would really take care of year one and year two, because we're saying year one at 50, and then year two at 77. The 49.5, we've already discussed, that's just firm for one year from ODNR. The existing park income is what the data, there are so many boat docks, they run for so much money, there's a certain amount of concession revenue, et cetera, that's there. Those are fairly firm in the first year, and the two pages back, where we're saying, starting in year two, can we grow that 18 to 30,000 from the standpoint of adding some events? Whether those be fishing derbies, boating, how can we, you know, that's what's going to be the task in the first year of management thing, to say, are there things we can do using this resource? For example, John Nouse and the Athens Conservancy started two years ago with a hike. Well, we know in Hocking Hills, that gets, what, 15,000 people or so, we get a baby 50 in year two. But is that our potential there that we can develop with the trail system, something like that as an event? And then, we would try to seek grants, primarily locally, but it's also just support from local business, whether they be financial institutions, or modeling companies, I mean, anything. But that's part of what Doug has talked about, as we need the five-year plan to be able to, to redefine that. It won't have all the answers in it. I think the major question that I, that I really asked for counsel, and we just wanted some assurances, that I didn't want to go to the state, spend the time for our law director and myself, negotiate, write up final agreements to say, this is then how the city would acquire Stroud's Run, and the state agree to it, and then come back to council and say, whoa, what's this? We've never talked about this. I can't go, can't do that to, to next year's council. So, I thought, let's bring this forward now. I thought of the resolution of intent, so that people will understand, they can, council members can put in what you want me to negotiate, or find out more data, as Debbie has said, and, and we can get to this point, and then have a good discussion early next year, because I don't think it'll take real long to negotiate with the state. I think that's, they're, they've been talking to us for nine months intensely, and for about a year and a half prior to that, at least when Kevin and I first started to meet, meet with them about partnerships. Some of these others as to tying up other grants, commitments by other organizations, that may take a little bit longer. But I think that, you know, what we're trying to do is just to say, we have an opportunity that doesn't come along very often for a city our size, to get ourselves a recreational area that will go from 95 acres, I think that it was when you came on board, what, 15 to 20 years ago?
18.
18, I was, hey, I was close. To where we've acquired over the last three years, an additional 265 acres, and this would be an additional 2,700 acres. That's tremendous growth, and I think one of the things the community, going through the comprehensive plan thing, says, we want to protect our environment, our view sheds, and a lot of other things. This is a rare opportunity to make great strides, I think, in that area.
Any final comments, Paul?
Rick, what Phil brought up is this Senate Bill 193, is this something that-
Sounds like bad legislation to me.
Is it something that actually acquiring a park, or actually putting a management plan in place would supersede or protect from, I guess?
Well, if-
Or is it a negotiation point that you have to do?
Well, I think that in, in our discussions with ODNR, we would ask for a free and clear title to it, and only have in there some degree of a reverter clause, should the city at some point in time not wish to, to do it. Because I don't think what the state wants to see is that they would give it to the city of Athens, and five years later, we'd sell off 500 acres. They don't want to see that, so they're going to have restrictions in there as to what we could do from that, from some standpoints. We, of course, would be wanting restrictions in there with respect that this is totally local control, and that the state doesn't tell cities like they have before, that you can't zone for those satellite dish or cell phone towers, and, you know, they've been putting a lot on us lately, just bypassing our local zoning. We try to make this as much as we could, that we control it-
Okay.
-as much as humanly possible.
Other comments, questions, Nancy?
I guess I'm okay with trying to proceed, as long as we don't commit to changing the income tax, tax mix on the basis of simply this alone. I think that those are two separate issues, and we haven't begun to discuss that issue. I have in my hands the Maximus study, and I find that the percent of cost recovery for the community center is about 13.6%, and maybe the, and some of the other things are all, I mean, we have some deficits here as well, with respect to what they would project we need to cover at least 50 from fees, and then 50 from subsidy from the taxpayers. And so, you know, it seems to me that we've done this study, maybe we need to talk in terms of what additional burdens we'll put on a system that is already pretty burdened. And so, you know, I guess I don't really know. But my second issue is, a more prosaic one, and that is, my constituents have said to me that this is relatively distant from our core mission, and I'd like, if we don't, if we redo the income tax mix, what happens to public safety specifically to police and fire? And I guess that it's a zero-sum game, folks, and that's where I think the problems lie. And so, it's all, it's good to have the plans and the ideas, and I'm all for saving all of our view sheds, I'm especially fond of one that we may be losing, but I do think that there are some other issues with respect to the, the income strategy that we have not discussed.
Other comments, questions? Yeah, Carol?
Just a brief comment about the Maximus report. Along with the figures that are given in that report, it also refers to market industry and recreation departments in general, parks and recreation, and the percentage return expected in those, and, and what across the industry is typical. And our report is not particularly out of line with that standard. There may be some areas of adjustment, but in general, it's in line with the industry standard.
And that was exactly what I was saying, they were talking about, we want to be closer to 50%.
Yeah.
That's what it says right in there.
Any other, any other questions or issues about the Stroud's Run proposal? Yeah?
Is there a timeline we're working against here, or is it a suggestive one that the task force feels?
That's what we don't know. I mean, right now, we have the chief of parks for the state of Ohio saying, I'm willing to enter into this, I've talked to it with Director Speck, the governor has been informed of it, no one's objecting to it, put together the plan and proposal. I don't know how many things could change in that line of command, I have no idea. I mean, that's why I made the statement a couple weeks ago, we need to do this as quickly as, as we feel comfortable doing it. I don't know if it's going to be an opportunity, three months, six months, or nine months or a year from now, I have no idea. It's speculation on my part.
Other questions, comments, concerns regarding this one? Okay, thank you for, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, it was behind the camera. Can you please come to the microphone, and he just came in?
Hi, my name is Robert Sumney, 20 Briarwood in Athens. I just wanted to speak as a taxpayer here, a 12-month resident, I should say, 12-month of the year resident, that I'm concerned from a tax level, and in terms of proceeding, I'm not comfortable knowing that down the road after the five years, after the various commitments fall away, that the taxpayers here in Athens won't be saddled with additional costs for something that, when so many people are complaining that we don't have enough fire people, we don't have enough police officers, we're worried about infrastructure, it just sounds like a luxury to me. Rather than one of our previous speakers, I would like to see if the city does go ahead with this, that future administrations are not tied to not being able to develop the property if, in fact, the park is running in the black, in the red. So, I would like, as a taxpayer, to have more assurance from council before you go ahead with this, that this is not going to cost the taxpayers of Athens any more money than what we're already paying, and what we're going to pay in the future for other things. You're going to ask us to pay for more taxes for, again, for fire, for police eventually, for other things that we may not be aware of right now, and when we see this as just a tunnel vision, one project, it may sound very appealing and very attractive, but I think when you take it into the overall scheme of things, what we project that we may have to spend money on in upcoming years, then I have a lot of concern about that. So, I would like to see more assurance, rather than some of the things that, you know, we've seen the university, for instance, make commitments, and then it falls away. We need to have commitments, I would think, that were more in perpetuity, rather than just a few years. I think that if people are really that sold on this project, then the university, the other people who are involved in donations, should step up to the plate and create a longer plan that would take care of the financing of the park. Because otherwise, I really don't see the total value of this, other than, again, as a luxury, as something that would be nice to have, but is it a necessity, and is it a necessity for the city to really get involved in? I would also finally like to see maybe a little bit more effort in going back to the county. And, you know, if it is such a great thing for Athens County, for Southeast Ohio, to get more, to get a commitment from Athens County Commission, to be more involved in this as well. Again, where we have the City Recreation Center, people of Athens paid the tax to build it. Again, where we have the City Recreation Center, people of Athens paid the tax to build it. People from outside the county weren't involved in that. And I'm just concerned that we're seeing the same thing again, where the city of Athens will pay for something that everybody else can enjoy without really paying a fair share. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Okay. Any other items? There isn't a miscellaneous on Committee of the Hall. Thank you. We're, Committee of the Hall's adjourned. We'll pass now to Arts and Recreation.
This evening on Arts and Recreation, Kevin is still here, and so I suggested to him that he explain a couple of shifts of appropriations, partly to expend donated money, but then there's an additional part as well. So Kevin, if you could explain that, that would be helpful.
The donated money has come in throughout the year, through the skate park event and other donations for benches that we've put in along the bike path. Also recently, the Ralph Dalton heirs donated $2,000 to be used at Ralph Dalton Field to putting a warning track around the home run fence. Along with that, the Sandlot League also wants to put warning tracks along the three fields they've recently renovated. They would be buying their own warning track dirt separate from us, but it'd be nice to do that project together because we get a better price on the dirt we need to buy. So the six grand from donations is actually that money that's been donated to the city. Some already expended, some not. And the other line item I'd like to be transferred is out of the new equipment. We have some fairly major improvements to do at the pool with our electrical system. We got through the summer without doing that. The city electrician recommends that we do not go into next year with the same electrical system, which is really our main feed for our pump and our filtration system. He wants to change that over to a safer system. We had some problems last year with our pump. Actually went out one day because our electrical system really isn't sufficient. I was just going to buy that out of new equipment, but since it's a repair of an existing mechanical system, I have to use repair and maintenance monies to do that. And also some other things, we're putting a water line in at West State Street Park. I purchased most of the equipment, but I've been told recently by the water department who's doing the labor, that they need to buy a few more parts to complete that water line through the park. So I also can't use new equipment money for that because it's part of an existing system. So I need to use monies out of repair and maintenance. I don't really want to wait till next year to do this because the electrical system can be done now while the electrician's available. And the water line itself needs to be done as they're doing the work currently. And the same thing with the warning tracks, that's work we'd like to do yet this year if we can. That way, it gives the dirt some time to settle before we start our season next April.
So in summary, it's 7,226 out of the rec new equipment, just to put it into operating funds for repair and maintenance, and the other is $6,000 to be appropriated to rec for, from the donations for improvements in various places. So that's the long and the short of it. Any questions or comments about any of it? It's pretty straightforward. If not, that will move ahead on Monday, and I don't have any miscellaneous, no one else does. Arts and Recreation is complete.
Okay. What an efficiently done committee meeting. Thank you, everybody. All right. Now, finance and personnel, there are several items on the agenda. As you recall, we're in the midst of a series of meetings that we hope will culminate in a budget coming out of this process, hopefully to be read on, first on December the 5th. So as part of that, one agenda item we had was to review a set of contracts that we enter into for service. One of them, one significant one is with the Chamber, Appellations Area Chamber of Commerce, and so Jennifer Simon is here to visit with us about that particular contract. Looks like you could, since we have the microphone at the table, you could sit at the table or stand at the lectern. That's fine. The camera folks will find you wherever you are.
You can be on your own. Do it on the table.
Thanks.
Well, it's my pleasure, obviously, to come before the council and talk about renewing our three-year contract to provide economic development services to the city of Athens. First of all, let me start out by saying, and I think most of you have seen in the media and have obviously heard me out on the street, I love my job. I love everything that we do in the Chamber of Commerce, but I love everything that I have seen over the last year in Athens related to creativity, innovation, the fact that we have a strong and growing healthcare industry, a strong and growing alternative energy industry, as well as, and one of the reasons why I'm giving you these industries is, I'll tell you in a second, is especially foods industry, and I can go on and on and on. We've done a series of programs over the last, I'd say, six months, WUB, Studio B. We've done some interviews with folks in specific industries, talking about what is good in Athens, and there is a ton of things that are good and that are doing well, and so many that we're, you know, we have to be strategic on which ones we brag about first. You know, a few, part of the reason, again, that I love my job and that I'm excited about being here and working on behalf of the city, some of the examples we have seen over the last year, you have before you, number one, a draft scope of work that I've put together. Debbie and I had had conversations, so you'll have a second draft scope of work. And in addition to that, there is what I would call a partial report of accomplishments, since we generally do our report to you in January of each year, but I did want to fill you in on what has happened so far. But again, back to why, you know, why the chamber loves doing what we do. This year, we have worked to keep diagnostic hybrids here in Athens County. We've helped them expand. We want them, obviously, to go into what would soon be a vacant building, the McBee facility. We are working with them. We've worked with the state to put packages together to make that happen. They were at 125 employees a year ago. They're now up to around 180 today. That's, of course, one of my, the best things that I love about this community is the number of companies that stay here and that add one, 200 jobs at a time, and what kind of strength that brings. We've also assisted a company in Nelsonville that's called Edmat. They have grown from 13 employees three years ago to nearly 80 this past year. Again, it's been done with a number of partnerships. Leslie Shire from ASNET, they've worked extremely hard in that facility. All of us have been putting in, I would, what I would call a team effort, making that happen. We have retained a business that was on Baker Road, it's called Jim Coatings. They are now in our industrial park that the Port Authority owns and operates. They had five people, and we started talking with them, and will be up to 30 within three years, and I think they're up to 10 or 12 now. And they've only been in the facility for three months. So we're working hard for them. They're part of what's called a manufacturing business incubator. They're only taking up half the building and pulling other manufacturing businesses into that building as well. One of the most exciting things I can tell you today, which is also one of the most confidential things, so I'll be as, I guess, brief and hold it as much close to my chest as I can, we're working to attract a company from Austin, Texas. It's a research and development that has been done, but the product is ready to be manufactured, and they want it manufactured here in Athens, Ohio. They make what I would call a medical device, or what they would call a medical device. They would employ over 600 people within 10 years and would likely be placed on an interim basis if we can make all of this happen in the McBee facility. So it's something that, obviously, is in the works. We've worked very hard on and continue to be committed to, and while we know there are hurdles to jump before we get to that point, it's something that I feel is extremely exciting and can really help to replace, obviously, the 360 jobs that will be lost at the McBee facility. We've also worked to retain a company, Specialty Books, in the Post Industrial Park. It's one that was on the brink of, quite honestly, leaving our community. We worked with them through the Port Authority to stabilize their lease, to help them sort of work through issues with their cash flow statement and see what we might be able to do to keep them here and help them, again, grow in their employment. So it's only a small sampling, really, of what we have done over the past, well, since we're here in April, I guess. You know, to tell you a little bit about what we're doing, again, I would refer you to this partial report of accomplishments, you know, go through those if you want, but I would, I'm sure, given time, I would allow you to ask me questions related to that rather than to belabor it. And I've also, again, included the proposed scope of work. Mr. Chair, I'm not sure how you want to do this, if you want to go through that scope of work, if, you know, what's the best way to proceed?
Why don't we summarize the scope of work, and then we can have just a conversation period with questions, and people can ask questions about different aspects of this. It sounds like the scope of work is a work in progress, so things might change in it. So does that sound reasonable, Debbie?
And I would just very briefly say that the list that I worked on after we had a chance to meet, I tried to go through and pull out the things that looked more like member services out of that scope of work and put in some things that would be specific projects that would help promote the comprehensive plan. So that would, those are really the main differences between this overall proposal that Jennifer brought and the draft that I pulled together. Just so folks know, I think there's a lot of overlap.
Okay. So why don't we just proceed and review the scope of work?
Okay.
Because we're, for those who are in the audience and those watching out in TV land, you know, this contract is a calendar year contract, and so we're up on its conclusion. It was a multiple-year contract, and we're up to its conclusion here, and we're poised to do some discussion of renewing, and that's why the scope of work is before us, because this is the point where you begin saying, all right, if we're going to do, if we're going to renew, what do you want to have done? How are we going to measure it? You know, what are the accountability issues that are associated with any scope of work? We have had a series of reports and that sort of thing about progress, and those would continue, but tonight, we're kind of focusing on the scope. So please proceed.
I would say, you know, as part of our contract with both the city and the county, obviously, we will maintain our enterprise zone management responsibilities, you know, working on new agreements, doing the annual reports, hosting the tax increment, or, excuse me, tax incentive review council, and then making that, those reports to city council on the open agreements that are out there. As you guys probably recall from last year, I think we only have two that are open in the county, and one is in the city of Athens. So, you know, right now, we'd be looking at new agreements. The majority of our work, and, you know, as I was sort of going through our list of things to brag about, is in the retention and expansion component. And we've worked with a number of counties, a number of technology companies, to form a regional technology council, where we will be working on, advocating for state funding for the council itself, but for, you know, in order to collaborate these companies, do marketing, matchmaking with the OU researchers and other financing. That's only one component of our retention and expansion strategy. We would continue to expand, maintain, expand our Shop Athens County First Frequently and Forever campaign, and you will be seeing, obviously, our Shop Athens County First Holiday campaign coming up very shortly, if you haven't already seen or heard of some of what we're doing there. It's something that we know is extremely important, and when you go back and look at our accomplishments, it's something that we feel very proud about. We are working on building a maiden Athens, Ohio, brand. One of the companies, actually, the Jim Coatings incubator, has come up with a design with Media Bright. We will continue to work on that design and hopefully be able to have, as they're manufacturing their product and putting it out there into the marketplace, a little piece of pride about where that product's coming from. So we're working on that component. We are going to be doing retention and expansion surveys for at least 50 companies and having that aggregated information to council on a regularly, on a regular basis, an annual basis. Continue to keep money local through our gift certificate program. Last year, we had 120, like, close to $125,000 that went through the gift certificate program. Again, it's basically 100 or so retailers, restaurants, et cetera, who participate in the program, and all in the Athens area. People buy our certificates and then use those certificates at those particular businesses. Entrepreneurial development and small business outreach, again, continuing. We have an entrepreneurship development group. We meet monthly, on a monthly basis. Leslie Shire with ASNET is one of our members. We have found that our collaboration cuts down on a ton of overlap and allows even more services to be provided to entrepreneurs that come to us. Continue to work with the High University on commercialization of technology. We work well with the High University Innovation Center, where, you know, some of these businesses are being incubated. I feel that's important. Incubate them, keep them here, help them grow. That's really what we want to be able to do. Membership, and Debbie, I think this might be one that you had probably cut out, but I know that Paul and I had talked about the importance of reaching out to the smaller businesses and growing that number. I've kept that in here. We can talk about whether that's a good number or not. I'm extremely proud that we have reached the 490 mark members this year, 10 more members than what we had anticipated. 480 was our goal. And about, that represents somewhere around 30 percent of all businesses in the county. So it's a pretty significant number. You know, we have a ways to go. Of course, I always want 100 percent. So one of our, the programs that I'm probably most proud of is our workers comp program. Last year, we saved members $180,000, and in 2005, we saved our members over $270,000. So that collectively did a pretty good job. Some companies saved, you know, $20,000, some saved $5,000, depending on the size of your company. It could mean a big difference to your cash flow. Redevelopment, community development, obviously, the McBee facility, soon-to-be-empty facility will be priority. We continue to work on the leads that we have for that facility and work to solidify those and make that happen. The other is to market empty buildings throughout the city. We've started that on our website now. We've upgraded our website. We told you that we would have 2 million hits by the end of this year during our report earlier in the year, and we are up to 1.75 million since April. So we don't, we didn't have the measurement from January to April, so we're in pretty good shape to meet that goal. Redeveloping, of course, the Columbia Gas property, and you all know that that is this close to being completely EPA certified. It's no longer a brown field, and we want to work, obviously, with the city to be able to look at annexation, if that's appropriate, and figure out how best to redevelop and use that particular piece of property. Uptown Project, Larry has been extremely busy, has worked through Uptown Improvements through our Uptown Business Association. It remains a big part of what we do. Feel very committed to the Uptown Business Association and the work that's done. University Estates, I think all of you or most of you have been out there and toured the site. We know that there's a huge potential for high-end affordable, that's sort of a, that's an oxymoron, I think. Nice, affordable housing? I don't know. I don't know what I was doing there. Convention, looking at a convention center, retirement housing, et cetera. And as you all know, obviously, we've been involved with the CCRC and the work that has been done on that particular project as well. I'd like to work with the city to develop, own a guide to the development process. I think that helps, helpful for both citizens and for businesses, developers, et cetera. I know I've talked to Muriel Grimm and others about the importance of having something like that, and I think it's something that would really add to what we do as a service to you. Again, our annual reporting would be done by, I would say, January 31st of each year, outline what we said we would do, what we have done, you know, where are we on an economic, socioeconomic scale, best as we can. Some of that data, as you all know, can, is only updated on a 10-year basis, but a lot of it, there is, you know, we can provide you with an economic profile. And then talk about priorities for the next year. When I go over to Debbie's handout, I think that is the, and that's this single piece, obviously, the enterprise zone management compet- Obviously, the enterprise zone management component, word for word, the, working with the city on the comprehensive plan implementation, I think absolutely is critical for us to really take a look and see how things fit into that. The community piece, we serve on the clean citizen, or clean initiative that's driven by citizens of Athens. I don't know, clean citizens, I think that's pretty good. And also work on other programs to promote quality of life in Athens. We are part of the Strouts Run Task Force, for example. The Halloween party, I'm not sure exactly what we can do, but obviously be willing to serve in a capacity to assist in any way possible. Other community programs, obviously, we've already worked with the Fourth of July and work on that, but pretty excited. There's going to be a, it's going to be a really good time in Uptown for Christmas this year. There's a different number of activities that are planned, so that obviously fits in. Again, entrepreneurial piece is huge for us. We talked about the redevelopment and then our reporting. I would just add on what I had put is exactly what Debbie has, is do the monthly staff reports. We're getting better at that every once in a while. It slips my mind to send it, but, you know, giving you a sort of a monthly report on what our activities are. Quarterly financial reports, I assume that that would be for us to show that if you're giving us a certain amount, I would say the 55, as an example, where that 55,000 fits into our overall budget and how those particular dollars are spent within our budget. That's, I don't think that's problematic for us at all to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Questions? Yeah.
I would just-
Mr. Chairman, it's just me.
You're worship.
It's getting thicker, just go ahead and answer your question.
I would just add that I think a lot of the other things that are in the scope of work that you presented are important things that the chamber does. And I think that you described a lot of the work that's the overall mission of the chamber. I just tried to pull back some of the things that looked more to me like member services or there's one specifically that looks to me like a partnership with the university. And so, you know, I don't mean any criticism of those other, other things. I just tried to really zero in on if the city's making an investment, how are the public dollars being used that really help accomplish goals that citizens have spelled out in the comprehensive plan? And so, you know, I think that the work that you have spelled out in there about increasing your membership and reaching out to smaller businesses and all of that is really important, but it may not necessarily be what, the thing that benefits the city itself.
Sure. Right, absolutely. I mean, your dollars obviously are not spent on our recruitment efforts for new members. That's, you know, a different pot of money.
Right. And I think that in conversations with Jim Sands, the divisions that used to exist, that you've made some structural changes and in some ways that does make, that those divisions, I think the city's money was supposed to be spent on the economic development work and not on the member services. So I think that this kind of continues a tradition that has existed in how the economic development money's used.
And again, I think with our reporting, we'll be able to show how specifically your dollars are spent and what portion of our budget.
Questions? Comments?
Comment, I think that the attempt at quarterly reporting and breaking expenditures down would be a welcome addition to the information we receive as well as the monthly reports that, the ones we've gotten have been very useful.
Other comments? Paul?
Actually, I'm unsure how to phrase this. One thing I'd be interested in maybe in scope of work is occasionally we're running across, we sit here and chat about policy and stuff like that concerning businesses. In particular, the last conversation I had with you, I think it was during the vending stuff. And I don't know how many vendors actually belong to the Chamber of Commerce and these type of things. I know sometimes you tell us a policy concept and what the impact of it was, would be, but one thing I'd like to see with us is sometimes if we can come to you and ask you saying, what if? And I don't know where that sits in this scope of work. I mean, for instance, what if we changed the vending systems? What if we raised the minimum wage, which was discussed in the last campaign? Things of this nature. I know some of them you probably feel strongly about and doesn't mean we take your advice, but the idea is as a, as a lifetime civil servant, so to speak, I have a very little concept of what businesses' constraints are many times. And I would be interested in that. I guess really what I'm asking is not so much for you to do polling, but to sometimes give us, that we can come to you for information, I guess. Okay? And I don't know how extensive that would be because very seldom do we really get into that nitty gritty stuff, but, and I know we have business people on, on council, but the idea is just to say what the overview effect would be. You know, for instance, one of the other discussions at one point was, you know, I don't know, leasing right of ways, for instance, whether it's telephone poles or newspaper stands, you know, what's the impact of that? And I know you'll probably have contingents who'd be very concerned about it and other ones who are careless, but you probably see enough of this stuff out there to say, okay, this is what happens when you, when you, you know, toggle this switch here, what happens on the other end?
Who's in charge here?
I'll ask that question. I'm just trying to get the meeting moving.
Basically, what I hear and what Paul is saying is that we need more frequent and real honest communication between the us and the chamber, not necessarily connected to your contract or whatever, but just for the good of the city in terms of getting the perspective of more than just the seven of us. We need to hear, and I know sometimes after the fact, I'll hear something about, oh my gosh, why did you all do such a thing? And I'm like, oh, I don't know. What was your take on it? What is the other side? So I think that's extremely important and maybe that could be partly accomplished through these monthly reports. Not necessarily just reporting on what you're doing, but what you're thinking.
Would it make sense to have a short, I guess, appearance before the Development Committee on a quarterly basis or, or something like that? You know, I mean, I don't want to stretch out your agendas, but, I mean, is that-
Well, it would seem like what we're talking about is a periodic consultation on issues of mutual, of importance with regard to economic development. It would seem like we'd want to keep it that general, that way. I mean, we can load this agenda up with a lot of stuff and we'll end up being here a long time and the quality of discussion might lag. So, that's what I'm hearing, is just acknowledge that we'd like to have the conversation continue about matters of related economic development, as it has done, you know, as it's sort of happened without that being in the scope of work and it'll just continue.
As our economic development expert, we'd like to use you as a, as an advisor to us when we need advice. Seldom.
We don't always take it anywhere.
Particularly when we're about to run a pandemic, when we need some help. Other questions or comments? Debbie, are you, yeah? Please.
I would just say, I think as Jennifer was going through the overall list, the section on community reinvestment areas and tips was, this is an addition to what we had seen at very first meeting. I think we could bring that in just as is, the way we did with the enterprise, enterprise zone management. And the other thing, as you were going through that list that we hadn't talked about before that makes sense, is working on the guide to the development process.
I like that. I like that.
I like that. I think that it's important and I think it would help citizens, I think it would help prospective developers, just to lay it out clearly and in a straightforward way would be a good thing all around.
Would, please, go ahead.
One thing that I didn't talk about, but I, one thing you're going to get, not for your economic development funds, but for obviously our membership dues and other means, is that we're working with Athens Foundation to create, I think I've talked to you about this, Debbie, Leadership Athens. We're going to work hard to sort of get people that are mid-level management folks or people that are new to the community and start on an annual basis, having a series of, sort of, classes where, you know, five to 10 people would participate and, you know, get a primer, obviously, on government and how government works in Athens, Athens County, how the media works in this county and how to be a part of that, understanding neighborhoods, those kinds of things. A lot of communities do this and so the Athens Foundation is taking that initiative and we're going to run with it together. So, that is something else on the community development side that I feel pretty strongly about that we're, we're working on.
Paul?
I know Debbie put in there the Halloween thing. I'm aware, I was, I was talking to some citizens just before Halloween who were trying to incorporate and trying to make this a regulated event, so to speak. Do you think your scope covers how to help them set something like that up or is that more of a tourism thing? And how often do you overlap with tourism? And how often do you overlap with, I guess, I'm asking how often do you overlap with some of these other activities outside the membership? I mean, here's somebody, gives up some kind of group that wants to sit there and start rolling along. Do they get assistance from you or do they get assistance from the Tourism Bureau?
A little bit of both. We were, you know, I'll start with your first question.
Okay.
Halloween. I think that that probably gets to that advisory role or however you want to be. We can, we can be part of an advisory committee, we can help lead an advisory committee, however best it is for you, we can help that. If there's a particular organization that's set up, obviously, we'd be more than willing to serve and be part of that. And then to get to your question related to tourism, we work extremely well with Convention and Visitors Bureau with Sally Dunker. We work with her on a number, obviously, of promotions and events and Sally does a great job. You know, obviously, her job is to look outside of Athens County and bring folks in and that's part of our job as well, is to, you know, bring those tourists in. But, you know, we do work with her on different events and things. And then the last part, I guess, is outside our members, you know, members being able to assist other organizations in what they're doing. I think we've done that. People have come to us for help with grants, finding grants, that kind of thing and we'll usually identify those or if there's something that we can do in an advisory role, we would, we always offer that assistance. Sometimes to our detriment because it can be time consuming, but we feel that's very important.
Other comments, questions? Are we headed towards maybe a meeting of the minds and it's that we've got two different drafts of the scope of work? Would it be possible for that to come together and reach some sort of finality so that we could all review it and then go, you know, either move ahead or not move ahead based on what it is? I'm not hearing, people are adding things to the scope, but I don't hear people saying anything about, well, gee, why is that in there or get rid of that thing? So, could we get a draft maybe here before too long and we'll have something to review?
We can work together and iron this out.
Okay.
And I wonder, this is just a question, I don't, you know, lean one way strongly or the other, since we're putting a lot more specificity into the contract than has existed before, whether people want to consider a one-year contract and evaluate how that's working and whether it's been a fair amount of work or whether we loaded up a bunch of stuff that's more than you anticipated or, you know, just kind of both ways be able to look at it.
You could make it three with a re-opener at the one, at the conclusion of the first year with options to modify the scope based on the results.
You know, as you're talking-
And there's different ways to skin the cat here on that.
As you're talking about the-
I didn't mean to say that. Sorry, Nancy. She speaks that figure of speech, I should have remembered that.
As you were talking about Strouts Run and having that longer term sort of financing picture, as we're planning, obviously, our budgets and as you all are, you know, it's better to have that longer term commitment and knowing, but I think if we have that annual sort of review and say, are we going in the direction we said we were going to go, I think that would, would be appropriate. I might be somewhat uncomfortable with a, you know, an annual contract, I think, again, it may be difficult, but I like, Dale, I like your idea of, you know, maybe coming in and just sort of setting, you know, checking priorities and changing those if need be.
Other issues? Okay, so we'll see some sort of revised scope of work and that'll enter into the finance and personnel discussion mix. Okay.
One last thing that I was trying to get out of my brain was that the neighborhood associations were interested in having a neighborhood section on websites and so that might be a way to, you know, talk, not to skin the cat, but to solve the problem that Dale talked about or someone mentioned about neighborhoods and explaining those to the outsider, you know, sort of a scoop on this Anna Group or the Southside Group or whatever.
So I think for a page on our site, we may be able to talk about the overall neighborhood associations and have individual links to each one of them.
I think some other people have talked about it and then maybe the Tourism Bureau. I don't know if it's so germane to their approach, but I've heard people say it, I think it's Paul's idea actually, isn't it your idea?
Was it? I don't think so.
I think it was Paul's idea.
Could have been my idea.
But that would be a way to flush that one out. Yeah, well, claim it quick.
Actually, I thought you were talking, they've been talking about trying to set up some kind of housing, real estate website.
That too.
I thought you were talking about that.
No, no, not that.
I don't think the chamber wants to get to that.
No, not in that, not, not that.
Okay.
More of a, more of a structural thing about their scope and service.
Well, put it all together. People know community as well as commerce.
Exactly, right. And we do have a community section on our site that we're building and trying to make strong-
How new is your site? I haven't been there in about a month or two, so.
It has improved drastically and it's so much easier now to add materials. We like that.
Okay. Other comments, questions about this contract? Okay, thank you for joining us, Jennifer. Thank you for your patience too, waiting through those other items. Second item on the finance agenda is non-union pay scale and staffing. We've had a couple of discussions about that. Mr. Mayor, would you like to circle? Tell us where we are with this issue.
Well, just to refresh you a little bit. We implemented this particular pay range in 2000. We had done a market study, again, as we had said we would, almost two years, about a year and a half ago, and from that made some recommendations, but last year this time, we were faced with income tax revenue that was stagnant and so we delayed doing anything to the pay scale. This year, we at least have recovered somewhat and there is some growth to the income tax and some growth in a couple of other revenue producing funds within the general fund. We really are considering, the study made a year and a half ago said really that our salary curve, so to speak, or line, was low at the first ranges of the, the pay scale and was adequate or above the line at the upper ranges in comparison to those cities that respond. We are also in the situation where since it's been in effect for five years, in both of those ranges, we have some people that were topped out. And that gets difficult because you're already getting your cost of living, you're just getting the same amount of money that you were last year, but to a certain extent, some, sometimes you have, you know, you have to do that because you can't just continue to raise someone's salary, although expensive forever, without some degree of retraining or some degree of mobility in that job. So what I did was I went through and for the first five ranges, looked at a $2,000 shift from the standpoint of increasing the minimum, increasing the max. For those employees that were, are in the first steps up to the midpoint, that would mean a minimum $2,000 increase in what they were getting. For those above the salary pool, as last year was 3%, everybody just moved to 3%, it would eliminate all but one topped out employee within those ranges. Cost wise, citywide, cost, and this includes all increases to fringe benefits like, such as retirement, workers' compensation, et cetera, was about $77,500 citywide, of which $43,100 and some dollars was in the general fund of the city. The others are- which $43,100 and some dollars was in the general fund of the city. The others are in our traditional streets, recreation, community center, water, sewer departments. And fairly , you know, so no other department was hit any more than about $10,000. That was the community center, and the reason for that is that they have the newest employees, because they opened five years ago, just as this was coming into effect, and we had a lot of, quite a few new employees were hired at the beginning range. So, almost all of these get this $2,000 adjustment. So, it hits that department just a little more heavy than some of the others, but in overall, I think it's manageable with the growth that we've had within the income tax. Again, it may tighten up the sewer fund just a little bit more. And what I'm finally working on is, is the open positions that I had highlighted in the budget. There are a couple of those I would still consider to hold open, but majority of them we are trying to fill. For example, I think we're down four, five police officers, one to military leave, and four through attrition. We're in the process, I think by the beginning of this budget year, we'll probably will have filled three of those four. I know I'm swearing in a new officer later on this week, so there will be some changes like that. Overall, I feel confident recommending to council that we go ahead and make this change, because I think otherwise we've just been stagnant too long, especially in those lower, but I would make the, if everything continues, hopefully, as the Chamber of Commerce has predicted here, if we continue to have some growth, then I think maybe next year we need to take a look at the upper ranges.
Okay, questions? Comments, concerns? Nancy?
Mayor, what percentage are we talking about if it's 2,000 per person in those lower reaches, roughly?
Probably in the 7% to 8% range.
Okay, and then in addition to that, will they get the 3% for their steps?
I calculated it that way, yes.
So, it would be more like 10%, 11% then?
Well, yeah, the question is, would they go, I think it was with that, you're talking 96 cents at $2,000. So, it depends upon where you fall. I mean, are we getting wage rates around $11 per hour in these ranges? So, for that person, yeah, you're talking this 10% or so. But if you get up into the upper ranges of those pay scales, you're then up into the, I'm looking up, so I don't make something up. Now, you're up to where, right now, it's at 1560 per hour, so 96 cents an hour on that is a lower percentage, obviously. Can do it either way. We can just go with where they are in place, but some people are going, we have to, just from the standpoint, I guess we don't have, we have to from the standpoint of, you know, leave them at step one, I guess, but.
I just want to, I mean, I don't-
I calculated it with the, with the step raises, and then I, because what, what I was trying to do was say, okay, if we just keep the current system in place, this is where everybody moves to, and this is what our cost is. So, if we add the 2,000, this is what our cost is, and that's what I came up with. I'd have to go back then and redo the 3%, or it varies on how much it is on each step. I think the top is about 3.2% and the low is 2% or 2.8% or so. Each, each one varies, as printed out in the schedule. It's a significant change to a lot of these people. I think part of it is, is that our, like, pay range one is, I think, 11, I want to say about 1140 an hour, then that's starting out. General secretaries, data entry operator, recreation worker one, et cetera, and those are the ones that is getting more and more competitive to try to attract people to those. Same thing, like even in range two, where our code officers are, or is that range three? Yeah, code inspectors are in range two. This would bring them up to, starting at 28,000, topping at 38.
And these, all the new hires will not have longevity, and that would-
Right.
And that is a contrast for, within that first group, isn't it?
Yes, it is, because we initiate, when we initiated this schedule about five years ago, the new hires that came in, instead of this year going to the longevity, will not.
And I'm all in favor of giving them the increase here. I mean, that's one of the reasons why I told you before. But I wanted to make sure that we, it's a substantial amount in one year, and-
Yes, it is.
I was concerned. And then, when we talk about the upper ends, then we have to talk about longevity, don't we?
I think so. I think part of the thing with our upper ends right now is we have a couple of longtime department heads that have in excess of 30 years and have chosen not to retire.
I can understand that.
And, you know, I can, too, having over 30 years, but it skewers a little bit where we are. We don't have as, it's just like, I don't want to pick on Kevin, because he's, he isn't topped out yet, but he's been with the city 18 years, and he worked in Parks and Recreation for, I think he has 25 total years, and he's within five years of potential retirement. You're getting towards the top of your, your ranges when you get to those.
And when they go to S, to P E R S, the longevity gets put into their, as a salary item, isn't it?
It gets put in in the fourth quarter report, because it's paid in December, and it's added to gross earnings in December, yes.
So, it's, so it's really a benefit at this point for them, and the people starting out will get that benefit?
Well, what P E R S does is take 12-month blocks of time, and so that is a payment, it added in, it looks as if you had it all year long.
Well, I mean, I think that people often talk like it's a Christmas bonus, but it really is more than that. You know, I mean, that's just my characterization.
It is, I mean, part of the way, I mean, something, I don't know if it was to reward long-term, I mean, you see, hear a lot about, because none of us were here when it was put in, but in a way, it's almost like a savings account, because you don't get it in each check. And could I get 6% more if I had 15 years in my check every two weeks? I'd rather have the 6% more every two weeks, personally, but that's me. Instead, it's being held over the course of the year, and you get it in one check in December.
We did make that change, and I don't know, everybody's aware of it, and I just thought it was worth repeating, especially for the lower-end people. So, they'll have more in their base, and it'll be there sooner.
Paul?
I know she had a spreadsheet to work with. Is possibly shoot me an electronic copy of what you're talking about, just-
Sure.
Because you're saying total difference is 77.
Well, you'd have to take two disk files and look at one before and the one after.
Oh, I thought you had a comparison, okay.
I saved one, calculated at the current rate, then I went in and did all those changes, printed it, and then manually said, oh, this is what my changes are.
The other question, this jump in pay scale, is that reflected, you said a year and a half ago the study was done, is that reflected to the year and a half old data, or is that?
It's a year and a half old data, yes.
Other, other comments? I'll just, I'll add to this, that one of the, one of the issues I think that's at play here also is the fact that we have, in the lower end of the pay scale, we, we still prescribe steps for people.
Yes.
And we're probably trying to make sure people don't end up in between steps, right?
Right.
So, this is my editorial comment.
You'd have to hold them at the step, or, you know, for two years, but make this adjustment or not, I mean, it's not a great amount of money.
If you go to an open range for the whole, whole scale, and then prescribe, you could prescribe percentage increases at certain anniversary dates, but not put them into the scale. That way, if you wanted to adjust the scale again, you could do that, but you wouldn't have people between steps, because there wouldn't be steps. This is something to think about for next time. I tried to get that in earlier, I couldn't get it in, so I figured I'm going out, so I'll make another pitch for it.
Make another pitch.
Nobody will know it next time, you'll have to come back and-
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
We'll see you again if you make the pitch.
Yeah, no, no. Other comments on the, on the adjustment to the non-union? Do you all know what, what's been recommended? Okay. Raise pool, 3%, is that-
That's what I-
The working number?
That's what I-
Okay, that's a diff, now, this is different. This is the raised, this is in the open end, where we would allocate a raised pool of 3%, which could be differentially applied based on evaluations, et cetera. Okay, everybody cool with that?
Yeah, could you clarify, that only pertains to the, to the-
Step six, when you're outside, when you're past the midpoint of the scale, is that what you mean?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at, thank you.
Okay. We prescribe a certain number of steps up to the midpoint of the range. After you're, after you pass the midpoint of the range for whatever job it is, then you're in this open period, open range where there's a raised pool that is applied, and we just, the mayor has recommended that it would be 3%?
The upper ranges, I think, six, seven, and eight.
Yeah, the whole thing is open, isn't it?
I think seven and eight and nine are all open.
Right.
The way, as you described, for the lower ones. I think six, depends upon if it's an appointed official, there's only four employees in range six right now, so. Three of them are in a step situation, and one is not.
Okay. Other, other questions? All right, we're going to keep moving. That's non-union pay scale and staffing. There's a couple miscellaneous items. As the auditor moves forward, this, this one is quick. Every year, we usually renew the contract for soil and water conservation. That's, that runs on a calendar year. Looks like it's going to be the same amount that it was last year, $12,000, but to get this done by the end of the year, we'd need to move this forward. Is that okay? Miscellaneous, yeah. And then, the auditor is going to talk about a miscellaneous item, but it won't be a surprise. We've talked about it before. Go ahead.
Right. We have brought this up, about home occupation and contractor licensing registration. The subject came up this summer, this past summer, of registering contractors and other individually-owned businesses, with the influx of lawn care workers that were seen around town. Carol Patterson approached me about this and gave me a list of businesses that had been spotted. And I researched them and found out that quite a few people run independent operations in Athens, but are not paying their share of income taxes to the city. Out of the 136 business names I checked, only 11 were on our tax rolls. I didn't finish the list. There's probably another 80 names on there I didn't bother to check. Then Dale Tamke contacted me about this issue, but with a broader perspective of how these business operations affect Athens. By registering home occupation and licensing contractors, we would not only be able to facilitate the collection of income taxes from these businesses, as we do from all other businesses, but the city would also be able to provide some degree of professionalism, including bonding and insurance. The city would not be saying that these businesses were particularly qualified, just that they met a certain minimum standard that all legitimate businesses need. We would also have a way of tracking them. I contacted Steve Pearson about this issue, since the registration and licensing would go through his office, and he's very supportive of these measures. It has come up before, I think in 1997, I have some record of that from the code office. Steve did some research and found out that many cities all over the country have home occupation and/or contractor licensing ordinances. Several states, such as New Jersey, Iowa, and Ohio, felt it important enough to enact statewide codes for contractors, and we have samples of all of these. I probably have at least 15 samples of ordinances and registration forms, fees, scales, and everything else that we've downloaded. Steve and I would like to amend the city code by passing separate ordinances, one for contractors and one for home occupations. These could both be in Title 11 under business regulations. Plumbers and electricians are under the building code section, which is Title 31. The zoning code should also be adjusted to include home occupations and the building code to include contractors. Steve has done work on this as far as wording, and we have, we have all this information that we could pass on to you. One other thing I'd like to add, though, is while looking at our present code, we found several sections in Title 11, business regulations, that we felt should be deleted or rearranged. There were at least three things in there that Steve said in his term in office, he has never, ever had anyone come to him to be licensed or regulated about, one being auctioning of jewelry. Anyway, Steve can make the recommendations about fees, and I thought especially since you're looking at some of the fees, considering changing other fees, that this would be a good time for this. Anyway, all I really want to say tonight is that if, if you feel you'd like to pursue these changes, I'll continue to work with Steve and get you our recommendations. Probably could do this by the end of the week, certainly before the next committee meeting. But there is a lot involved in trying to change our code, trying to make reference back to the different titles, and listing the actual home occupations, fee scales, timelines. We, Steve and I have discussed a lot of that, but if you want us to pursue that, which we've done a lot of work already, we'll be happy to do it. I just wanted to know if you were interested before I put in any more time on this.
Jim?
I'm definitely interested in pursuing it. I, you mentioned timelines, I would see it as a fairly long-term commitment of council to, to work through it. So, I'm not sure, do we, I'm not sure that we'd need you to come back by next committee meeting with any information. I don't know whether we need to take action now, just say, yeah, we'd like to pursue this, and then as you and Steve work out the details, we do what was necessary. Just, it was probably just a slip of the tongue, you said that registration and licensing, the city would provide bonding and insurance, it wouldn't have provided, assure bonding and insurance, that, that's all.
Record.
Oh, right, they would provide it.
Yeah, we just make sure-
But the city, we would have a record of it, yeah. You're right, it does sound like that, but no, that's not the way I meant it. No, they would provide the bonding and li, and, right, insurance, but we would have a record of it.
And we did, yeah, and by them holding a license or a permit from us, then a consumer could be confident that they had those-
Exactly.
Safeguards.
At the moment they were licensed.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Let's be cynical.
Debbie? You specifically mentioned lawn care, and I would just, I think we've talked about this before, if this is kids, you know, mowing grass and raking leaves, I think that's a whole different category.
It is, they wouldn't be included at all, you know, single operations. We could set a limit, you know, a pay limit. We already have on our records a minimum of 12 days of working in the city, that you have to work before you pay income tax anyway. So, we could use that, we could set a minimum amount of revenue income. There's a lot of ways to go about this, so that you could eliminate people like that, that are just making a little bit on the side. But I, I think, you know, I'm glad that Jim is interested in pursuing this. I think the more I talk to people about this, I find out more and more people who are operating businesses out of their homes and making a living wage at it. Everything from travel agents to computer repairs, investments, consultants, and I just think you'd be surprised when it comes right down to the people that do this out of their homes with computers available, who are under our microscope here, under our scope of being able to find them and tax them, as we do other businesses who operate out of a storefront.
Carol?
I know this is a conversation Leslie Schaller and I have had several times about someone struggling to start a new business legally compared to someone who just kind of does it and starts something up on their own, and the frustration of the ones that try to do it the legal way and pay workers' compensation and, and, you know, take some of the, the legal steps to have a business, and how problematic that is to convince people to do it the right way. My one sort of comment of warning is that, just what Kathy alluded to a minute ago, this- this isn't something that you put into effect and suddenly everybody signs up. It's a long, slow process, and it's a self-regulating process more than anything else. But it would immediately be some level of improvement because people might start asking for that. What is your city license, or, you know, that sort of thing? And then, it would begin to self-regulate, but it's not an overnight thing, it's a long, slow process.
Another thing we found on the internet are questions and answers that, you know, cities use on their websites. Do I need to, what do I need to do if I want to start a business, what's involved in licensing? And, of course, we have a great website that we can put information out there. And just to add to what Carol was saying just now, though, my understanding is the licensing of plumbers started, I want to say 20 years ago, from other plumbers, similar to the lawn care business, of seeing people out there with trucks, with, you know, logos, names, phone numbers printed on the sides of their vehicles, doing business around town, but not, you know, on our tax rolls. And it's a similar kind of situation. You know, the names given to me this summer to check were not, you know, high school kids mowing somebody's lawn, that somebody went up and asked their name and phone number. These, you know, people have vehicles, trailers, equipment, and are actually operating a full-time business in what they're doing. And so it is self-regulating, it's like a lot of other things that the city does, you know, it's complaint-based, we find out about it. We don't have anyone in our office who has time to go out running around knocking on doors and asking people if they have a business, but it would be nice if other people would pay attention. And if we do this, then the information is out there, any publicity that we have, and the more people who know about it, when they are starting up businesses, the more people will find out and will do it. I don't think everybody who doesn't do it is really trying to get away with something, they just, you know, maybe started out small and don't realize that, you know, at some point, they need to come forward and, you know, get put on our list.
Paul?
So, in terms of workers' comp, they have to pay the city quarterly, is that how it works?
No, they wouldn't pay us. They just have to show us that they're bonded and have insurance and workers' comp.
And they're paying income taxes, right.
Right. All they would have to do is, there's a list of things that we would ask them to show us proof of.
Okay. And would there be penalties for not doing that? Would that be part of that?
Well, we wouldn't issue them their license, their registration, if they didn't.
You'd have to put a penalty in of some sort. I think the point is, is that we're trying to assure our licensing to our citizens who are purchasing services, that if this person is hurt on the job, falls off your roof cleaning out the gutters, they've got workers' compensation. You're never gonna have a personal suit coming back against you, that there's some degree of assurance that this is reputable. That's totally separate from the issue of are they paying income taxes, because they could be licensed and work in the city, but only work 10 days. You know, and then part of that in there, you have to define, what's a day? Is it eight hours, seven, five, one job? You know?
Something to think about.
Comments? Yeah, Nancy?
Do you think we ought to consult the chamber, since there's a natural item on this?
I think.
Truly, in a sense, they are the ones much more adept than we are at this. My second question is, we are talking very simply about having a list of people who have met on one day a set of requirements, is that right? And we're gonna be having them checked at the code office?
With an annual renewal.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it's not, I mean, because I think, I don't know if you've talked to the law director, but the last time we were almost on this road, I remember he would, he had some real strong opinions on it, and it just dropped at that point in time, so. I think that's a key point, because I don't think we're licensing them. I think we have a list that says, these are people, and we can use the list to collect income tax, good deal.
Right. No, we're not licensing that. Licensing of plumbers and electricians, you know, involves testing, and it's more of a...
No, not that. I meant the additional ones you're adding to it.
Right. Oh, yeah. It's really just a registration.
It's a list, yeah, right, okay. I just want to make sure it's pretty clear.
Well, but the registration does have some requirements, if you require workers' compensation and bonding.
Right. They've met those things on that day, and we've had experience enough with bonds on council that we have some understanding of how that goes.
Other questions? Yeah, Carol?
Well, just the points that the mayor was making concerning consumer protection, and one of the biggest ones is just if someone comes and starts a roof on your house and disappears off the face of the earth, there's some level of following up on that, finding the person. And we certainly, we all know people that have had contract work done, and then the person's left town, and they couldn't find them.
But wait a second, we would have no part in following up on that, wouldn't we?
We would not, but we would have their, what they registered with on record, whether it's true or false, that's right. But certainly, it should reduce the consumer...
Yeah, well, it's important to have realistic expectations, it is establishing a minimal set of standards to operate a business, a certain type of business within the city, which right now, we don't have.
Yeah.
Basically, right now, you, you know, if you can convince someone that you can do the job, you're hired. So, yeah, I mean, it is, it's a minimal set of standards. It sounds like there's some interest in pursuing this, there's not an interest in expediting the pursuit of this, so if we have time, can we put it on a future agenda to see a little more language, maybe, about what we're talking about? Does that make sense? Okay. Thank you. Miscellaneous item, Nancy?
Debbie and the mayor both wrote to me and asked that we put the cleaning and repair of water wells up, which is an annual expenditure from the water fund. Mayor, last time, I had people tell me that they were concerned that the approach that we were using was out of date. And everybody's an expert in this town, have you noticed that? But anyway, so they said that, you know, we could do it for less if we did it a slightly different way, and I was wondering if you could, as you are. I know Nick's been here for 100 years, but, you know, maybe ask if they could, just as I've been where I was 100 years, for 100 years.
You couldn't give me any potential names to call to...
Oh, I don't know.
What is a better way to do this?
Do you want...
I forget, who was it?
The guy who was doing the work.
Someone saw it on the internet, probably.
No, no, the guy who was doing the work, he said if they did the spec slightly differently, we could save a lot of money.
Oh, there you go. Well, there's it.
Actually, it was somebody from the city who was talking to the guy who's doing the work, who was scratching his head, saying, "Why are we doing it this way? Because nobody does it this way anymore."
Yeah, it's kind of out-of-date thing, so 45, if we can knock it down, that would be nice, we could spend more money on the next thing, which is chlorine fluoride salt, caustic soda, and sulfur dioxide.
The chemical.
The annual chemical expenditures. And that means, I guess, that additional money, we need the street salt perhaps, and maybe we don't, but that's going to be...
That usually gets wrapped up with it, doesn't it?
What'd you say?
That usually gets wrapped up with it.
Yes, it's all together. I just said, the increases are primarily in the street fund. And then, the last thing was addressed both Carol and I, it's for an increase in the sewer debt fund from 150,000 to 156,000.
And the mayor can explain that. He explained it to me, but I'd prefer you would explain it to me.
It all goes back to when we bought the series of handheld units for the new computerized system for billing, which isn't totally up and running yet. But when we did that, the original budget had all of the sewer debt, both income and expenses, in just the sewer fund, but we were depositing the last increase into the sewer debt fund as the ordinance had required. So what we had to do is we had to make, Kathy had to make a change in revenue projections, and I made, you know, a change in expenditure projections, and I estimated 150,000, and when she pulled it all off, we're 6,000 off, back in the sewer fund. So since the sewer fund, instead of having 150, I think it really had about 163,000 in it, as of the end of June, the easiest way to solve this is just increase 6,000 in the sewer debt, automatically decrease 6,000 in the sewer fund debt, and she's back in balance. And she won't have to bug me about this every week.
Well, if that's all she has to bug you about, then we better get it taken care of.
Okay, so Nancy, you want, you got the last three?
I've got them here, yeah.
Oh, okay, I put them down here, too, and I'll do soil and water conservation. Any other miscellaneous items for right now?
I haven't seen all of it.
Yeah?
We've talked a lot about the permit fees in a couple committee meetings. Dale and I talked on Friday about wanting to start moving that through, so that we can get that in place for next year. And it's, from the meetings that we had, it seemed like people were in agreement with most of those recommendations from Maximus, with the change on the zoning board variance request, to have that be $100, and the revocable license request, did we say 50? Those were the only two that I remember people having.
Maybe it was the other way around. Seriously, I thought the zoning board, we were talking about lower...
It was originally, Maximus said we could justify 535, and so there was a lot of discussion, 50 or 100, and I thought we settled on 100, but...
I would have preferred 50, I think I was the one talking 50.
Yeah, you were the 50, there were some...
And I threw out 100, but I have been convinced that 50 is a more equitable...
And the right-of-way revocable license request was...
It's 100 now, so now we went to 150.
Yeah, 150.
Yeah, it's 100 now.
Okay.
Yeah. And those were the changes.
Quickly, off the air, we can do it.
Those were the ones we had. So we would propose it, go ahead and get that thing moving, put it up next time, so we can get it, we need to vote it in, we need to get it done by the end, we need to get it done so it has 30 days to go into effect for the first of the year, or else we'll miss some of the things that need to be, that are done in January.
Should we put an emergency clause on?
Or we could do some special...
We thought we could do a special, maybe.
Before the, so if we read it next week, we do a special session on the 28th, and somewhere else in there, a special session.
By the end of the year, by the end of the month?
We don't have to do an emergency clause, it would get it through three regular readings.
I love it when we have three meetings in one week. But by a couple of them, right?
We do much less of it than we used to. We're more organized, I think. The mayor's more organized.
I have a question that I guess would be miscellaneous, sort of stretching.
Before we change the subject, could we go back?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we are at least agreed that we'll put up the fee ordinance on Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then we can, we'll talk about how we would proceed with that. Okay, thank you. Carol?
My question kind of goes back to the beginning of this meeting, with the Chamber of Commerce and the contract, and the tourism contract. How to proceed with those so that we get those done by the end of the year as well? Is there any feeling that we should have more of a scope of service from tourism as well, or, you know, want to just look at the contract the way it was? Actually, it was two years ago, and we balanced, we made a two-year contract so that tourism and Chamber of Commerce would be on the same schedule subsequently. And so that's why it was just a two-year contract, but...
Well, Sally always comes in January and gives her report, and I think that initially, as I, and I wasn't here, I don't think, for the initial tourism, maybe I was, but we automatically have promised a portion of it to the Tourism Bureau. And we've had good ones and we've had bad ones, I think we're in a specially good phase right now. If you want, I would rather not, in the next two weeks, go over the tourism report, but...
Well, we have been awarding that contract in December.
Right. And she reports in January, typically. I mean, it was her choice before to do it. So I, that was one of the things I put down on my list, is I'll just put up the tourism fund renewal unless anybody has a problem with it.
Well, I do have a couple questions about it, and that's why I had asked about it.
Okay, well, then we'll just have a planning, or a city services meeting sometime in the not-too-distant future, and still get it done in time. So I'll erase it.
And Carol, I'm not sure what that contract looks like. The contact we previously had with the chamber didn't really specify work.
I have copies.
So it really needed some more, you know, just to do a better job of making it something that we can measure and that they can report on and all of that, so.
Right.
I'm not sure what this existed, when it is.
Well, it really parallels the Chamber of Commerce contract, it's very similar. And the only things that I thought were in question was, first of all, going back to the three years, now that they're on the same schedule. But the other thing was to discuss, we, last year, removed the 16,500 city support to the tourism grants on the basis of a very tight financial year, and I would like to see that put back in.
I negotiated that, and I guess, you know, I didn't even think about redoing it, given Stroud's run and all the other things that are on the agenda, so we better have that discussion later on.
Okay.
I actually did it at the recommendation of the mayor last time.
Okay. We could, if you wanted, I mean, we could have Sally come in and not do the full-blown thing, but if we're gonna talk about scope of work, you could, we could have that limited discussion if you wanted to. I mean, so, but if you don't, it's fine. I mean, if we're, if we feel like the agenda's too full, then that's okay.
I don't know about scope of work. I mean, the... I'll put an imagine.
Other miscellaneous items for, yeah, Kathy?
Just quickly, you asked me for revenue spreadsheets a couple weeks ago, sorry, and I just want to hand them out tonight.
Well, yee-haw, okay.
Got them finished right before I came down here, so. You have any questions?
I have one.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
We're paid.
And, so we understand what we have here, these are, it looks like going back to 2000, we have, this is actual revenue, these are revenue, this is revenue by fund.
You requested them.
Right.
I'm just re-dealing what you, what we have.
I just want to make sure what I'm looking at.
So everything, all account lines, the totals for the funds are bolded, if you want to just glance through that.
Great, thank you, this is helpful.
Great.
Any other finance things, before we adjourn the finance committee meeting, finance personnel? Okay, we're done, thank you.
Can you send this as an electronic, so I can graph it?
Okay.
Planning and development, really, there is just a miscellaneous item. With regards to the proposed retirement center development on Stimson Avenue, you should have received in your mailbox copies of two letters, one from Gary Hunter to John Burns, the Ohio University Law Director, stating Gary Hunter's opinion that city council should not pass any ordinances until a lease agreement is entered into between the developer and the university for this piece of property. So that's one copy. The other, copy of the other letter is one from the developer, who says that they will work diligently with the city to develop a recreation area adjacent to the proposed cottages, if this goes ahead.
This year.
This year.
This year, so, those are counter.
And with those two statements, I'm going to say that I'm planning to introduce our proposed ordinance for first reading next Monday. I will probably talk to the law director about adding some kind of, another whereas or another condition that this would apply if a lease is entered into, or some tie to a lease agreement, so that it wouldn't go ahead. And without that agreement, then we would table it until something did happen, or the end of the year came.
Can you, can you clarify, whereas has absolutely no meaning, except...
I did, I said whereas, I...
You mean another article?
Right, yeah.
Okay. I mean, it, in the...
No, 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 I, whereas was a slip of the tongue. I often say whereas when I mean other things.
It's been the job.
But, yes.
Was there any indication from John Burns?
We've had no word at all.
Nothing.
Nothing.
No timeframe.
No.
But doesn't it have to come from the Board of Trustees, according to what he said?
Yes, and they don't meet to February, so that's, that's the closest thing to a timeframe we have.
Paul?
So, what kind of standing does NCR have in terms of this? I mean, they don't have any lease agreement, really, they're not, they're just somebody who shows up in front of us.
They seem to understand that there is an understanding between them and the university, but we're not involved in that, so I don't know. but we're not involved in that, so I don't know. So we will introduce it for first reading, and it may well be tabled and sit there for a while.
I mean, the principle is site control, right? You have to...
At this point, yes, before we go any further.
I mean, it's not like something out of the blue.
Right.
Debbie?
I have a separate miscellaneous item.
Oh, okay, so that was just an announcement, so people would be aware that that's coming up.
And Jim, could we talk about tabling? I really dislike tabling things on second reading and then bringing them off the table at third reading. I think it doesn't give people enough time to talk, and so could we table at first reading, so we'd have two times of additional readings? Even if it means it's...
I was going to say, that may well mean that it would be a special session, then.
On the 21st? I mean, because if they, well...
Well, if, well, it'll probably be a special session anyway, because we have just three full readings, so if, if we got information in time to take it off the table...
You mean if the trustees came down and had a special meeting, so they could approve it?
Yeah, they could come to your house, right?
Oh, why not?
Okay, so, I see Nancy's point, maybe we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
We may find ourselves having, if we're going to get a fee scheduled past by the end of November, we may find ourselves at least having a meeting on the 28th of November to deal with that matter.
Oh, for sure.
So...
Maybe we'll even have an appropriation ordinance.
Might be ample time to, with enough, with enough lead time, because that sounds, I mean, that's the issue, is that people, I mean, that's the issue of pulling it off at, at third, is that nobody knows when the pull-off's going to happen, so, you know. At this point, at least, we'd say, there's a meeting, here's the agenda, everybody knows it's happening.
We'll read it once, and then wait until they have site control.
Read it once.
Mm-hmm.
Table, you know.
So if it's introduced next week, we would then table it at the same time?
Read it once and table it, yeah.
It seems to be the consensus.
When the site control comes, then it's pretty easy to proceed.
Yeah, okay, so...
Debbie, second miscellaneous.
This was just an observation, the Herald Square planned unit development site has some fill on it that looks like it's asphalt, and I wondered if the wellhead protection area administrator could check that out and see what's going on there.
Sure.
I was down at the ceremony for the Visiting Nurses Association, their, their community garden, Veterans Garden dedication, which was a beautiful ceremony, and I noticed that as I drove past.
Good eye.
Okay, any other miscellaneous? There are none, we're adjourned.
It's about 9 o'clock.